Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Good afternoon. It is six o'clock. It is the appointed time for the Randolph County Board of Commissioners to come to order. So we call this meeting to order for our December meeting of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners. Welcome each one of you for our meeting tonight, to be a part of this process. I know lots of things are going on in our county that's drawing a lot of attention right now, and we're moving into the filing period for various offices in the county. So it's gonna be a busy time as we go forward, but it's a part of the process. And welcome each one of you to this process tonight as we conduct the county's business. So with that, again, we welcome you. We're gonna call on Pastor Michael May for our invocation tonight, and then we'll have our pledge of allegiance. So please remove your hats and stand, please.
Say it's an honor to be here, and I appreciate all you folks that serve. It's a tremendous honor. Let's pray. Father, we come to you right now in Jesus' name. Lord, as we take this time to pray for Chairman Fry and County Commissioners, God, as you give them wisdom. Lord, we also know first day of Advent, Lord, that we pause and reflect, thanking you for your goodness and your mercy this past year. Lord, we thank you for a safe Thanksgiving season. And Lord, we ask that you would continue to bless this great county. Lord, I thank you for Sheriff Seabolt, administrations, and others, Lord, that have joined on to protect and serve. We thank you for the sacrifice of time for each family of County Commissioners, Lord, as they have shared their time with us. Lord, we pray that you'd keep them safe. Father, I pray that you continue to give us that wisdom and knowledge, Lord, and let your love shed abroad in our hearts, that we may exemplify Christ. Lord, I pray that other counties, sister counties, would follow suit with our foundation and, Lord, our faith here. And Father, we ask it all in the name above every name. It's in the name of Christ we pray, and all God's people can say, "Amen." Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. This being the first Monday of December, the protocol for this board is to reorganize on the first Monday of December. And so until we reorganize, I guess right now, we don't have anybody in office. So with that, I want to ask County Manager Zev Holden if he will conduct the next part of our business.
Thank you. Kind to Chairman Fry. We do not presently have a chairman, and I will open the floor if there are nominations for Chairman of the Board of County Commissioners.
I rise to nominate Darryl Fry.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further conversation? A vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Congratulations.
Thank all of you for this board. We do have lots of issues that confront us, but we also have some good things that are going on in our county. And it's a great county. It's a good place to live and raise our children, be a part of that process. And I thank you for your confidence and look forward to serving the citizens of this county continued. So now we need to elect a vice chairman. Do we have a motion? Have a nomination?
Nominate Commissioner Kidd as vice chair.
I will second that. Further discussion, nominations? Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Opposed, no. And it is appointed. Kenny Kidd is our vice chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
On these next items, A through T, if there's no exception, and pending without exception, I would entertain a motion that we appoint all of those as are listed and currently in place.
Some move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
And thank all of you for continuing to serve in your various positions and boards and other issues around this county and around the Piedmont Triad area of our state. Okay. On the public comment period, I'm going to ask Mr. Morgan to read that and also some other comments relative to our meeting that is announced and planned for next Monday night, a week from tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As many of you know, and I have shared with some of the individuals in the public this evening, we will have, on Monday, December the 8th, at 6:00 p.m., the Randolph County Board of County Commissioners will hold a duly advertised public hearing on the status of the Randolph County Library Board of Trustees. This meeting will begin at 6:00 p.m. in the meeting room of the Randolph County Historic Courthouse. That's this room. The doors will open to the public at 5:00 p.m. Those who wish to speak will be required to sign in by providing their name and current physical address between 5:00 and 6:00 p.m. The commissioners will hear comments from those wishing to speak on the status of the Randolph County Library Public Library Board of Trustees for a period of up to two hours. Each individual speaker will be limited to three minutes. Names of those wishing to speak will be drawn at random from a bowl for a period of up to two hours. And following the public input portion of the meeting, the commissioners will discuss the issues raised and take action as they see fit at that time. That is the rules. We have now publicized those rules as it will apply to the December 8th meeting. Mr. Chairman, the rules of public comment period for this evening are normal rules. The public comment period this evening will be limited to 15 minutes at the beginning of the meeting. If more time is required, it will be at the discretion of the board. Each speaker must give his or her name both orally and in writing before speaking. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. Comments are to be directed to the board as a whole and not to one individual commissioner. Response, discussion, or action concerning issues raised during the public input session will be at the discretion of the board. Speakers will be courteous in their language and presentation, and speakers should not discuss matters which concern the candidacy of any person seeking public office or matters in current or anticipated litigation. Given that we limit our public comment period to 15 minutes, if there's anybody here this evening that wants to speak about the Library Board of Trustees issue, we would respectfully request that you hold off on that until our Monday, December the 8th, meeting.
Carl Hicks.
You may be a tensey bit unhappy with me.
Well, are you here to speak about the Library Board of Trustees?
Yeah. I kinda got a speech that segues into next week's.
We want to let those that are here tonight, that are not here to speak about the library, that we had a little issue last time.
That's why I wanted to mention that I did.
And let them, I think, and let them speak tonight. And if we have time left, we will take those till our time limit is up.
Okay, I'll stay till the end if that's okay.
I'll ask the clerk to present the names of those that aren't here to speak about the library issue.
I think that's fair. I understand. I'll wait till the end and see if y'all have time.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Judy Saunders.
I have a problem about the library. We don't want to hear it.
Okay. Mr. Tim Saunders.
That's not accurate to say we don't want to hear it. We just want to hear it at the end of the meeting.
Tim Saunders.
I grew up in a library. I'm not gonna talk about that. I'll tell you what. Darryl and I both know the pains of getting older. You know, I hate acronyms. We went through a spell where there was all this Furo over CRTs. And I was wondering, what the heck is the problem with cathode ray tubes? And now we've got a Furo over DEI. What's y'all's problem with Darryl Earnhardt Industries? What did Darryl do to y'all? But anyway, I digress. I want to thank the ladies who work at the Board of Elections. I've worked at the Elections for many years, and I've sort of aged out of that because I can't stay awake and I can't stand up. Melissa and all those ladies are unbelievably honorable and diligent in making sure that the elections are fair. You know, we just got through with an election. I thought, well, I'll have a little time off between. Which started up already. So, you know, it's just from one election to the other, and it is more than just a full-time job for them. And they do their level best to make sure our elections are run properly. So when they ask for money, turn loose of the purse strings because the state is making more demands without giving the funding, and they need the equipment to do their job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Saunders.
Susan Scott.
I was here to speak about the library area.
Thank you.
Bob Morrison.
Bob Morrison, 1735, Umont Court, Ashboro. I'm actually here to talk about faith and Jesus. Surprise some of you. Jesus never asked for anything that He taught to be enforced by civil law. In fact, when He encountered a crowd about to enforce civil law by stoning a woman guilty of adultery, He did what we today call civil disobedience. They didn't enforce the law, and she went free. All those Old Testament laws that people like to talk about, sometimes the old covenant, He taught, "Love your God and treat other people the way you want to be treated." And if you do those two things, you'll be okay. By the way, it's okay to eat pork chops. We'll get to book banning because the crowd, the committee assembled by a Roman emperor to write the first Bible, did also the first book banning. They picked what was in, they picked what was out. We've got dozens of versions now from different denominations. None of them that I know of include Jesus trying to have His teaching enforced by civil law. In this country, the Puritans use those old laws to justify torturing and executing people for witchcraft. The people in the South Carolina colony were really irritated with having to pay taxes. The Baptists paid taxes to support the Church of England, now the Episcopal Church. Those are among the reasons why authors of our Constitution separated church and state and said, "We will not have an official church." The government and the church collaborated to imprison Galileo for teaching that the earth goes around the sun. Turned out they were wrong, but they were sure he was contradicting the Bible. And right here in our community, yes, I'm gonna say the word, "Library Board." We've got a professional group that acquires books. They're sensitive to the fact that parents have a right and a responsibility to supervise child reading, and they require that a parent be present when small children pick books. The book that one parent doesn't want a child to read is one that some other one does. I would say to parents, "Do your job. Supervise your children." And commissioners, the part I would like you to pay attention to is supporting your professional staff and our freedom and our Constitution and not be banning books in Jesus' name. He wouldn't do that. And if you think He's paying attention, ask Him before you go to sleep tonight.
Mr. Morrison, that's your time. Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone here who signed the list that's not here to speak about the library? Who's next?
Who was first?
I don't know. I didn't.
What's the next name?
Harriet Mulder.
Okay, thank you. Who's next?
I assume Mark Eagle and Jennifer Eagle are here to speak about the library. They've been to other meetings.
Mark and Jennifer Eagle? Are either one of you present? Okay, next names.
I believe they left.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Charles Edgerton.
Good evening. Nice to see you all tonight. I am Dr. Charles Edgerton. I live here in Ashboro. And I want to talk a bit about, first, I want to tell you a story. I used to be the head of the photography department here at Randolph Community College. I taught there for 25 years, and I was department head for 10 of those years. And we used to bring photographers in from all over the world to come speak in our photo studio. And maybe some of you have been there to hear the different photographers speak. And this one photographer was really world famous, and he had shot over 50 covers of Time Magazine. And we were sitting there having our breakfast. It was just me and him. And someone got the loudspeaker, got on the loudspeaker microphone, and gave the salvation message to Jesus. They went through the, what is it, the four steps? I'm not sure what all the steps are. But they went through, and nobody stopped them. You know, it's the microphone that's by the cash register. And I looked at him, and I said, you know, "I'm sorry, this is happening," because I knew he's Jewish, right? That this is happening. This is what happens in our county sometimes. And it was interesting. Went up to pay our bill at the cash register, and he reached for the microphone, and he said, "I want to tell them about Moses." You know, that was his response to the Christian message. Now, I call myself a believer in Christ. I'm a Baha'i, and Baha'is believe in the oneness of all religions. But I'm concerned about one form of Christianity taking hold over all others. And I have to ask the question, what Jesus are we talking about? You know, which Christianity are we talking about? Because there are thousands of forms of Christianity. I'm gonna read a little bit from an article. "The reason the framers of the Constitution specified in the First Amendment that Congress shall make no law respecting established of religion was because many of those who fled Europe for America were fleeing to avoid religious persecution." And some could call what happened in the IHOP a form of religious persecution for those who aren't that kind of Christian. And the framers realized it was essential for citizens to be free to choose their religious beliefs. The so-called Christian nationalists, and I would call them white Christian nationalists, by imposing their religion on the nation are no different than the Taliban. Let's just pause for a second. Think about that. Is it different than the Taliban, who are imposing their religious beliefs on Afghanistan? I think there's really not much difference. Like other religiously motivated authoritarian groups, white African, white American Christian nationalists seek to undermine the validity and presence of other faith groups, and even of Christian denominations they deem politically and theologically undesirable.
Dr. Edgerton, that's your time.
Okay, thanks. Just, I'll end. Just, which Christianity are we talking about? Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Do one more.
Isaac Hoffman.
Did all y'all have a nice Thanksgiving? Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. I am Isaac Hoffman. Since there are so many new faces here today, I want to review why we are here and what we are asking you, the Commissioners, to do. We are a group of over 63 neighbors that are sick and tired of having to hear the noise from the Task Action Shooting Club Gun Range on Fuller Mill Road North. The range is open over 70 hours per week in the summer, open every day, including holidays. And yes, people do shoot on Christmas and Easter, et cetera. They have only a row of trees as sound barriers, and you can see through these trees, so they really do nothing about the noise, and are only about 100 feet off the secondary road and within one-half mile of over 50 homes. The range was not developed with burns or any other changes to an open field until 2000. And the shelters were not built until 2015. The club states that they have been shooting there since 1979, but were only a group of about five or six friends shooting occasionally. Our Randolph County Commissioners will do absolutely nothing about this issue despite the range having no permits whatsoever and five covered shooting stations. The property owners do not live anywhere near this property, so he is not at all bothered by the noise. The club has 188,000 per year, per the IRS, at the end of the 2024, despite being a nonprofit. Why don't they use this money to put up adequate sound remediation? It would satisfy the neighbors and minimally impact the club members. We are, we, where are our rights to be able to enjoy peace and quiet on our own properties? Change the UDO as we have requested. Thank you. And last meeting, one of our neighbors said, "We've been coming here for a year." That was in October. "I've been trying to do something about this for 24 years." So, thank you, and have a nice evening.
All right. That's our allotted time. Now we will go to our regular meeting agenda. And first of all, we have to approve the agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that a Commissioner would like to consider separately?
Chairman Fry, I'd like to pull off item C on the consent agenda, please.
Item C. And also, on the new business agenda, item F has been pulled by the equestrian. So item E is sort of along the same lines, but item F has been pulled from our agenda for tonight. Any other changes to the agenda? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as adjusted? Have a second?
Second.
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, no. Okay. So the first item would be the item C, which is...
You want to do the rest of the consent?
Yes, consent agenda.
And then that item?
Can. All right. Approve the consent agenda with the change. Without item C. Do I have a second?
Second.
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, no. And it's approved. So item C is consideration of appointments to the Randolph County Board of Health. And you have in your agenda a list of those, the list of the three that are eligible for reappointment.
These will only be the...
Yeah. And so the first one is the physician position, Dr. Caroline Prochnow and Dr. John Slatowski are the two names.
I'll make a motion to approve Dr. John Slatowski to the Public Health Board as the doctor.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. None. Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, no. And Dr. John Slatowski is appointed. Optometrist, Dr. William Walker.
I'll make a motion to approve Dr. William Walker as the optometrist for Public Health Board.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Dr. Walker is appointed. Community member, we need one. And Todd Daniel has been recommended, and Albert Lassiter. Is that our motion?
I'd make a motion to nominate Albert Lassiter. The reason for that is he has been suggested by our Board of Health Director and contacted, was willing to serve before anybody else put in an application. So I think that's appropriate.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second for Albert Lassiter as the community member. Those in favor, let it be known by saying...
Sure. I know that position is the open community member position. Is that right? And I remember the discussion we had a few years ago, that, so Alan Ferguson is retiring, correct?
Yes.
And so this would fill that seat. So I remember when we had the discussion about Alan Ferguson, he was somebody who lived in David Allen's district. Is that, are we trying to keep that going and have somebody from David Allen's district in that seat?
John Slatowski is from the district.
Oh, but so this one, you're giving up? That he lives somewhere else, you're saying? I mean, I'm just...
He's a community member.
I just wondered if he's supposed to be from your area.
I don't think there's any requirement to be from any specific district.
Okay, all right. Well, there's no requirement. It's just, you know, the previous one was from, and we had a discussion about that, so I just wondered.
Further discussion. Those in favor of the appointment of Albert Lassiter, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, no. No. I think I heard two no's. Motion passes three to two. All right. That takes care of item C. So we will go to the regular agenda for our meeting tonight. And our first item is a public hearing on an economic development project. And Crystal Gaddy is here to present.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you so much for your time tonight. Wanted to come to you again to talk to you about another economic development project that has arose for us. We've been working with this company for the last probably six months now. They actually found us and brought us into the loop with them. And therefore, because of that, they were a little late in the game bringing us to the table, so they did not qualify for our traditional incentives that we typically come to you when a new company is coming into town. But I do want to share with you a little bit about... But I do want to share with you a little bit about Earth Retention Industries, who has acquired the property at seventy-seven eighteen U.S. Highway sixty-four and intends to establish a manufacturing operations there. The company selected Ramsoor due to its strategic location and stability, and suitability, excuse me, and availability of the former Crawford Knitting Facility that would work perfectly for their operations that they'll be starting. The company is committed to an investment of at least three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in building renovations, making the project eligible to apply for a North Carolina Commerce Building Reuse Grant of a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The total investment in renovations, machinery, and equipment is likely to well exceed the three hundred and fifty thousand committed. In addition to its financial investment in the project, Earth Retention Industries is committed to creating twenty-two new jobs, excuse me, and will be paying fifty-seven thousand oh forty-eight as an average annual wage. This exceeds the county's average wage of forty-nine thousand three fifty-five. These wages will equate to one point two million dollars in new annual payroll in Ramsoor and Randolph County once the hiring is, has met the goal for the, the grant. As mentioned above, Earth Retention Industries is eligible for the building reuse grant from North Carolina Department of Commerce. That was under consideration this week, and all of this will be pending on that approval of that grant. The grant program requires a five percent local match, a cash match, which would be eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, based on this one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant. On behalf of the town of Ramsoor, the EDC has requested that Randolph County support the project by providing one-half of that required match, or four thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars. The county Commissioners would consider that tonight at this meeting. The EDC believes that the Earth Retention Industries project is a good economic development project for the town of Ramsoor, increasing the value of the building, generating investment in new machinery and equipment, and resulting in the creation of twenty-two new jobs above our average pay. Therefore, the EDC requests that the Board of Commissioners approve a resolution authorizing the submission of a building reuse grant application to the North Carolina Department of Commerce, which we have done, and again, will be approved this week in the amount of one hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and commit to the five percent match of eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars that would again be split between the county and the town of Ramsoor in the amount of four thousand three seventy-five. The EDC will be assisting the town of Ramsoor with the reporting of this administration of the grant. Typically with these building reuse grants, we require that there be a guarantee of this in case the company defaulted and did not complete their metrics that are required for that. They have agreed that, and that will, this will be in the agreement as set forth for them, that they will have to make, meet the performance measures before they're paid out any of distribution of the grant. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, Commissioner?
Well, I liked the part where you said they chose us, so...
They did, they did. It was a good fit for them.
Yes, I think it sounds like a good fit for, for Ramsoor and for Randolph County, so...
Yes.
This does require a public hearing, so I'm going to open the public hearing at this time on this request for Earth Retention Industries acquiring property at seventy-seven eighteen U.S. Highway sixty-four Eastern Ramsoor. Is there anyone here tonight, for or against, who wishes to speak to this issue? Anyone at all? Seeing or hearing none, I will close the public hearing and return to the board for action. Further questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make the motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the county to provide one-half the local match required for the economic development project.
All right, do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you, further discussion, questions?
I should ask, Will, do we have the money to do that? I always want you to...
We'll scrape it up.
Okay, okay.
All right, those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, opposed, no, and it's approved. Thank you, Crystal. Next item is Waste Management Annual Report. Bob Peeler is here tonight, and Michael McFeely.
Good evening. I'm Bob Peeler, Senior Manager of Community Relations and Government Affairs in the Carolinas with Waste Management, and I'm joined with Joey Jones and Mike McFeely for our annual report. We're honored to be here, Chairman Frye, Vice Chairman Kidd, members of the Board of Commissioners, staff, and citizens of Randolph County. I'm, reflect back, and you all know I'm not the detail person in the room, but I've been working for Waste Management for over eighteen years, and I was blessed over ten years ago to be asked to come to Randolph County, to be involved in the awarding of the contract for the Great Oak Landfill. And we appreciate the fact that the county chose us. We're not perfect, but we do take some pride in the fact that if we do know of an issue, we will follow up on it. And when I think back of, of the last decade, that I've been blessed to be here, even in September the twelfth of this year, as many of you know, I have an identical twin brother, Bill. By chance, he met Chairman Darryl Frye in Myrtle Beach at a seafood restaurant, and I was almost asleep that evening, and I saw a message come from Chairman Frye, I said, "I need to look at this." I looked at it, and it was a picture of my identical twin brother, Bill, and Chairman Frye, who had met. I think Bill didn't really, didn't, acted like he didn't know Darryl when he saw him, but it was not Bob, it was Bill. But anyway, just a connection that we have, and Mike McFeely's wife, Amy, is here with us this evening, and I think one of the things that I find some, some pride in too, is the fact that we have twenty employees at Great Oak Landfill, and all twenty are residents of Randolph County. I think it matters every day, and the work that I do in community relations sometimes is interesting, but especially Mike and his staff at Great Oak, and the work that they do every single day is good work, and I think is important work. And I'm gonna ask Joey Jones, if she would, to say a few words about the contributions that Waste Management has made over these last few years and will continue to make to Randolph County.
Good evening, everyone. And just to reiterate what Bob is saying, I, so I'm Joy Jones, I'm the Senior Account Executive of Public Sector, so I cover half of North Carolina. I agree one hundred percent about the pride that Mike and his team take in Great Oak. I give tours at landfills across the state. I am so proud of how we operate, how we, the safety, how we, you know, maintain it just, if you tour other facilities in other parts, I mean, not, not to, you know, I just, we take a lot of pride in what we do, and I'm very proud of, of what we do and our team there. We won't bombard you with too many numbers tonight, we just did want to kind of highlight on a few overall, so we're gonna kind of start with the, since our partnership started in twenty fourteen, we have paid seventeen point six million to Randolph County. In the last two fiscal years, it has, the last fiscal year was one point six three million, the prior year was one point four three million, and then there's another close to a little, actually a little over a million dollars that goes into the, covering the operations of the convenience sites, as well as disposal for the material there as well. And on the other side of it, we have also paid close to ten million to the state of North Carolina for solid waste tax in that same window. We're at like nine point, almost nine point nine million on that. And the wonderful thing, of course, about the money that goes back into the county is then, you know, getting to run through the grant process and, and how that benefits businesses in the community as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Joy. Now I'd like to turn it over to Mike McFeely, who is the main person.
He's the boots on the ground.
And he, he was, he's here, he's here every day, and if you have any questions, and again, I know that you have seen the report, our annual report, and the citizens will be able to, to view that also, but Mike McFeely is gonna be here for presentation and ask any questions that you have specifically.
Thank you. I'm Mike McFeely, I'm the District Manager of Great Oak Landfill. We are wrapping up our eighth year of operation here in Randolph County. I think if you look at the report that was provided in the last fiscal year, we, we took in a little over six hundred and seventy-two thousand tons into the landfill. We've constructed seventy of the one hundred and ninety acres of the, of the total landfill footprint, and we continue to operate the convenience sites across the county, the six convenience sites, which is done free to the res, for the residents of the county, and done at our cost, so. We are not, we do not have any active construction going on right now, we're actually, what we've built is gonna last us into twenty twenty-seven. We have a permit to construct phases one through four of the landfill and a permit to operate phases one through two. Phases one through four make up a hundred and fifteen of the hundred and ninety acres that we have, so.
I noted, the very first annual payment was a million and seven thousand dollars, and the payment for this July, those two, which we, we've had expenses, it's a million six, six thirty-two, four twenty-nine, so we've seen growth in those numbers, and I think we all know what we've done, a lot of those monies, last couple of years, more directly in the budget, but a lot of, a lot of good within our, our community with the funds from this landfill.
So I have a question.
Sure.
Of course, nobody's surprised by that. With the six convenience sites, I know the one in Ashboro County Land Road is manned. Are the others manned?
Yeah, all of them.
They're all manned?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so when I looked at the report and broke it down, was it eight hundred thousand dollars last year for the six sites? But if, if you break that down, divide it out, trying to figure out about how much it costs for a site, it also says, plus the cost of disposal at Great Oak and the cost of processing recyclables in Winston-Salem. So, how much would you think, ballpark figure, that would add to what it costs to operate one of the landfill sites?
Yeah, so the, so the eight hundred thousand number that's in the report, that is the, that is the cost for, across the six sites, I don't have it broken out by site. But if you look, so we have taken in, we take in an average of about fifty-five hundred, I think last year, we took in fifty-four hundred tons through the, of, just of waste through the convenience sites. At fifty-five dollars a ton at Great Oak, that's, that's our, our tipping fee. I don't want to, I think we figured that out, what did that add?
Yeah, the other side of it, the eight hundred thousand is from the operation, so that's the transportation of the material, and then between, sorry. So the eight hundred thousand is more for the operation, so the trucks, the haul, the containers back and forth. The others, I think we're looking at like one, somewhere between one point one and one point two million, and the rest of that has to do with the, the disposal piece of it, and then the processing for the recycling you mentioned there, and of course, that fluctuates based on what commodities are running for recycling.
Sure.
Do y'all have ways to track how much is coming from each convenience site? Do y'all have that number?
Yeah, that's, every bit of that is, every transaction, every load that come, comes in is weighed in the T R.
Like from farmer, from coal, from this?
Yes, yes, we track it by site.
Is there any way we could see that? And the only reason I'm asking, as far as which, each individual is, we've been, I've had some questions about trying to get another site in another area, and I'm just trying to figure out if it's feasible if the site closest to that is being overran and doing a lot more than we might.
Yes, I can, I can give you a breakdown of what came from each site.
That'd be great.
Over the fiscal year, or whatever period of time you want.
Thank you, sir.
Other questions?
I want to question, well, observation, in the recycling side of things, I noticed that the tonnage for tires is two point, about twenty-four, twenty-four hundred tons versus the single stream's only six hundred and thirty-three. That just seems, I, I never would have guessed that, I know tires weigh a lot, but that seems like an awful lot. I know we've had some issue with the amount of tires coming in to the cell, is, are we still having any issues with the, the amount of tires coming in? It just seems just like a lot of...
It, it continues to increase. In the last fiscal year, we paid Central Carolina Holdings close to three hundred and ninety thousand dollars in tire disposal. We continue to take them in, you know, we're taking from all the sources that, within the county, and probably the only, if we have any problems now, it's just getting trailers fast enough. You know, getting Central Carolina Holdings to, to turn the trailers so that, so that we have available space when these tire haulers bring them in.
Just seems to be a lot of...
It is, it is a lot.
Figure out how many cars we got in the county, and figure out how many tires, and see if that makes sense. Seems like there's a lot.
It's an expensive item.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
It, it's a huge expense, and, you know, of course, of course, the county is reimbursing us through, part of that, through the scrap tire management fund, but the total amount of tires keeps outstripping what comes from the state.
The other thing I want to mention too, I think back in twenty seventeen, and it probably Waste Management didn't get enough credit for, for the Ag Center, they gave, you know, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I believe that went to the Ag Center as part of the initial investment, so since we had the ribbon cutting a couple of weeks ago, you probably didn't get the credit you should have, because it was done so early, but we appreciate that, that contribution back in twenty seventeen.
Yeah, that, that was on your list, the seven fifty, on January the tenth, twenty seventeen. What David's referring to, we had the ribbon cutting and naming of the building a couple of weeks ago at the Ag Center. We gave you some cooties for that too, so...
Thank you.
Any other comments?
We do have sponsorships available if you'd like.
You put a big banner out there, the rodeo.
We'll talk about it, but it's, it's a partnership, it truly is, and over the years, because back in twenty fourteen, I think in June, June second of twenty fourteen, Waste Management made a, wrote a check for three million five hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
To Randolph County. But it's, it's more than that, it's more than about the, actually the funds, it, it is about the partnership, and I know that since Waste Management, that our responsibility with the convenience sites, and sometimes, as you know, it, it ain't easy, but it's something that we keep up with, and we're trying to do even better, and we'll continue to do that, and since Waste Management and Great Oak have been doing the convenience sites, of course, it is, it's free to the citizens of, of Randolph County, and I think that, that matters too.
We used, we used that first check to buy property for Toyota.
Right.
What turned out to be Toyota.
It's been, as I mentioned, it's been a lot of life over the last decade and more here in Randolph County, and we hope to be here a lot longer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So, we sit, continuing with this theme, we have our annual report from our Tourism
Good evening, Commissioners, Senior Staff. You'll see rotating through several of our attractions that we market and promote in Randolph County. Lots of activities for families and friends to enjoy. I appreciate the opportunity tonight to present our 2024 Randolph County Tourism Development Authority Annual Report. I'm going to highlight some significant economic and community impact numbers for you tonight. So as we start, our tax savings for each resident in Randolph County in 2024 calendar year was ninety-three dollars and forty-eight cents. Our total revenues, state tax revenues totaled eight point six million dollars and our local tax revenues totaled at five point two-one million dollars. Employment and payroll, the industry supported one thousand, one hundred and sixty-four direct tourism jobs, and that was forty-four point eight-three million dollars in payroll income for Randolph County. Visitor spending, travel generated one hundred and ninety-nine point eight-six million dollars in visitor spending, and that represented a strong five point four percent increase from 2023. Our occupancy tax revenues and lodging performance, our lodging sector demonstrated a robust growth in 2024. Revenues totaled in 2024, one million, five hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-four, and that was a five point four-five percent increase from 2023. And as a reminder, these taxes are collected from our hotels, motels, bed and breakfast ends, short-term rentals, Airbnb, Airbnb, VRBOs and campground structures. The average occupancy in 2024 of our hotels rated at sixty-two percent, and that was five point three percent higher than two, 2023. The average daily rate on our room rentals collected was a hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty-one cents, and that was an increase of two point one percent from 2023. Revenues collected by Randolph County averaged eighty-four dollars and thirteen cents per room, and that was a ten point seven percent increase to 2023. Demand for our hotel rooms increased eight point four percent, and our overall revenues increased about eleven percent compared to the prior year. Our strategic data collection allows us to understand our audience and optimize our marketing efforts. So our organization takes those occupancy tax collections and turns around and re-markets the information to visitors to invite them to come back to stay. Of the thirty-two attractions we surveyed, they reported approximately one million, seven hundred and one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine visitors, and that was an increase of eight point six percent from 2023. Top states recorded were North Carolina, Virginia, South Carolina, Florida, Illinois, Ohio, Pennsylvania, New York, Michigan, and Wisconsin. Top visitors from North Carolina, the Raleigh Durham Chapel Hill area, Charlotte Metro area, our Piedmont Triad neighbors, Hickory Statesville Salisbury area, and the Fayetteville Lumberton Laurenburg areas. Again, collection of this data is important for us to retarget those dollars and invite those visitors to return. Moving on to our visitor centers that we operate in partnership with North Carolina Department of Transportation, this may be the only touch point a visitor may have to North Carolina. So I want y'all to listen to these numbers. They're really incredible. In 2024, our team assisted a hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-four visitors, just at those visitor centers in Seagrove. That was a twenty-two percent increase from 2023. They were able to distribute our travel guide, forty thousand of those, the state DOT road maps, thirty thousand of those, and the North Carolina travel guides, almost twenty-nine thousand of those were distributed at those two locations. We had guest registry entries of twenty-nine hundred, and we saw international guests, twenty-three entries, so twenty-three international guests at those visitor centers in Seagrove. Moving on to some of our marketing, our social media and website, our digital outreach and presence were revolutionized in 2024. Our social media presence expanded significantly in total page, page reach. The Heart of NC flagship account audience reached, um, an impressive five hundred and three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three visitors through targeted paid content and hosting digital influencers. Our website performance, our dynamic website, heartofnorthcarolina.com is our key resource that we drive visitors to through digital print ads as well as our social media. Website visits, we had two hundred and eighty-one thousand in 2024. Our total page views reached one point three million, demonstrating a highly engaging user experience. We did refresh that website in 2024, so I do encourage you to look on there and, and kind of just scoot around and see what you can find in our county. The calendar of event listings, they're the root source of our information for advertising, our social media content, and our media hosting. Moving on to our public relations, this is another way that we, um, are able to promote and market our attractions and our partnerships. We were able to host fifteen media, um, members, including digital influencers, editors, freelance writers, securing valuable placements through print and digital and social media. Online placements, you'll see we placed eighty-five, and they had an estimated view of four point eight-seven million. Print placements were thirteen through these influencers, a total circulation of two point three-four million. We secured eleven television segments, segments statewide and within the triad and triangle. Links back to our website were fifteen. The most important number in, in this sheet is the seventy-one tourism partners we were able to feature and highlight throughout the county. Posts from the media we hosted were a hundred and forty-seven, shares of the media stories, eighteen point two thousand, Instagram reach, four hundred and forty-six thousand, and the TikTok plays were fifty-one point nine thousand. In 2024, we highlighted the North Carolina Zoo's fiftieth anniversary. Um, we also, in September of 2024, were able to highlight County Miracles, a novel by Nicholas Sparks, which was anchored in, in Ashboro. We concentrated on the family adventure tour going along with the experience at the North Carolina Zoo, and that resulted in twenty-eight online broadcast shows, social placements by those key influencers we hosted during that experience. Probably the one that everyone's most familiar with are visual advertisements. Um, in 2024, we executed over a hundred and fifty advertisements in print and digital form, strategically targeting markets in the Triangle, Greater North Carolina, Virginia, and South Carolina markets. Some of the key partnerships we've maintained, Triangle Media Partners in Chapel Hill, Chatham County, and Durham, the Randolph Hub locally community with, for the local community engagement, Military Families Magazine targeting the North Carolina military market. We expanded our partnership with our state magazine, blending the print, digital newsletter components and a new social media reel production. New outreach, um, we experimented a little bit with the motorsports and NASCAR enthusiast. Um, we reached out and worked with the Daily Downforce and Eric East steps out of the group YouTube channel, and we partnered with Thad Moffett in that effort. Our creative content, going along with the fiftieth anniversary of the zoo, we created the Fifty Fabulous Finds in the Heart of NC, a booklet that's comprehensive and covers all nine municipalities in the county. We also created a County Miracles Tour site posters. So as visitors came to our area, they could see the spots that were mentioned in the book without having to read the book. Um, and they could actually go to the sites that were mentioned in the book. Some final thoughts, um, our 2024 was successful, um, but it is a testament to the collaborative spirit of our communities. Our marketing efforts are continually fueled by nine municipalities and unique attributes they offer. The tourism partners are our true heroes. They're the ones that make it happen. They're the ones that when I call or our PR firm calls, they're there, ready to host and share their story and their message. Their passion keeps us focused on being an affordable, family-friendly location centrally located here in the heart of North Carolina. Thank you for your time this evening, and I'll take any questions, comments.
I have a comment, uh, because I never thought about it until just now. You mentioned targeting, um, military families.
Yes.
Is that something you've done recently or?
We've been doing that at least in the past five years, since I've been at the helm.
Okay. The reason I bring that up is if you remember, that was, um, focused at one of the NCACC conferences, um, recruiting military families.
Yes.
To, to come and, um, live and work in your area. And I never thought about the fact that that could go hand in hand with tourism because if you get them here to visit, then there is the chance that, you know, that they would come back to live here.
Yeah, we've had several conversations with the EDC about how we can work on that, that area of the workforce that's not touched. Because we are so close to Camp Lejeune, we're so close to, to Fort Bragg, so definitely targeting those markets.
Okay, good, good, good. And what about, um, um, there was a five point four increase in visitor spending. That's always a good thing.
Yes.
That helps our, our citizens with their, with their taxes a little bit. And, um, where are we with hotels again?
We do have one downtown, a block or two from here. They should be open in spring of twenty-six is what I'm seeing in some data that I've reviewed. Um, there's been announcements of a couple along sixty-four near the Ag Center, near the current cluster of hotels. Um, haven't seen any ground broken on those. Of course, there's several pockets across the county. As soon as the infrastructure and water gets in place, there's so many opportunities across the county. We really need those hotel rooms. When we have sportsplex events, the hotel inventory is gone. When the zoo has a big weekend, inventory is gone. The Ag Center starts having events, the inventory is going to be gone. And, you know, we want to make a good first impression and we, we need to be able to, to put people in those hotels close by.
I, I volunteered with the, you know, the pottery celebrations last weekend, and I always try to make it a point to talk, people coming in as I'm putting their bracelets on, I'm talking very fast. And it seems like there were more that made it a two-day trip this time than in the past. They talked about, you know, just coming and staying in the area and doing different things for, you know, for two days, which I think is a plus.
Yeah, I think it's a testament to the pottery community, their marketing efforts and our marketing efforts, and we work collaboratively together as well as they'll take separate markets and send out to their, their followers too.
And I do see that Seagrove Pottery is the second highest visitor request.
Yes, yes.
Above the zoo. That's odd.
Good report, Amber.
Thank you.
Thank all of you, staff, everybody.
Yes, thank you all for the opportunity tonight. Thank you.
New voting equipment? Melissa Kersner? I think you. Andrea has a lot of experience up here.
Yes, can you give me some pointers? Good evening. Um, I am here tonight to seek final approval to purchase some new voting equipment. Let me give you just a little background on it and why, because we don't take these purchases lightly. The legislature passed a bill, uh, three eighty-two that came into effect in January, and that essentially made a lot of changes in our absentee voting processes, our provisional processes and due dates. And part of the changes were to, uh, move up and speed up the timing of us getting our results out on election night. So now we have to do things faster than ever before. In the twenty twenty-five, uh, excuse me, twenty twenty-four presidential election, we did have some issues that kind of slowed down our, our being able to process equipment. So we realized at that time, we needed to look at maybe, uh, a new voting system, an improved voting system, and improved software so that we can meet the demands that are put upon us and to make sure that everything is, is successful. So purchasing voting, a new voting system, and what we were asking for and what's been approved to this point is to replace what we have with the newer version of what we currently have. It's newer, it's faster, the software makes everything work faster and seamlessly, and it's got lots of reporting features that will be very helpful to elections. This process started in the spring. Um, our Board of Elections decided to go ahead and, um, start with the process, and the first, first step was to hold public demonstrations of voting equipment. We were required to hold, but public demonstrations of two different types of equipment, and those were open to the public. We got a preliminary recommendation passed by the County Board of Elections. That was by our previous board in June. Our board changed again in July with four new members out of five, and that board approved this recommendation for new equipment as well. So I feel good that we have support from, from many different board members. We tested the equipment in July of 2025 with a simulated election. Um, public members, you know, members of the public were invited and we had members from both our previous board and our current Board of Elections there. And we actually did, like I said, we simulated an election with different ballots just to make sure that everything ran properly and was reported properly. Then this request for approval of the voting system went to the State Board of Elections and the executive director there did approve it. And, um, that was in October. We did come to the County Board of, uh, of Commissioners with our funding in the budget for this current year, and we do have that approved money in our budget. It's three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars, excuse me, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars to replace all of our equipment with thirty-two new voting tabulators, ballot boxes, and one high-speed counter that helps especially when we have recounts. This is also going to be the new improved software, which we would have to purchase anyway, so that's really going to give us a seamless, um, election system, voting system that all works well together. And so this evening I am requesting approval to make that final purchase, uh, for the voting equipment. It's with election systems and software. Again, it's the type of equipment we have now, it's just an upgraded version, and three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars. Uh, and so I'm here to answer any questions you may have about that.
And you said you do have the money in your budget?
It was approved in our budget for this fiscal year.
It's in our current budget.
It's in our current budget, yes, sir.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I guess they're readily available. I mean, early voting will be here.
Yes, February twelfth. Um, we were hoping to get it done in November, but we decided we needed to get through those two elections. We had two back-to-back in October, November. Um, the company's well aware that we are ready for the equipment whenever it's all approved, so it shouldn't be a problem to get it.
With the new software, is there annual, um, subscription?
There are annual maintenance fees, and we have to pay that anyway. Um, it's, it's a state contract, um, so that the price is the same statewide, but it depends on how much equipment you have. We are required by statute to have that maintenance agreement. They do preventive maintenance on all of our equipment once a year, and so that cost is built into our budget as well, and it has been for, for fifteen years.
With the new equipment, is it a big, is there a big difference between the old equipment and new equipment as far as cost or maintenance?
No, there's actually not. It might be a little bit less actually because it's newer equipment, um, but it's, it's around forty-five to fifty thousand dollars a year, which I think is a lot for maintenance, but that's, there's only one company that can do maintenance on the equipment, and that's the company that sells it. So it's, there's just not a lot of people who are creating voting equipment that can maintain it. So, but we are required by law to have that agreement.
And I'm assuming there's no market for our equipment that we have now?
What we're going to do is trade it in, um, and so that company will, I'm sure will resell it, but we have thirty-four thousand, over thirty-four thousand dollars for a trade-in, and whatever a customer loyalty discount is, is twenty thousand dollars. So it's not a huge amount, but it is nice to get something for that equipment.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. And it all has to be certified by the state and the national, at the national level. So this has all been certified as well.
Other questions? What's the pleasure of the board? I need a motion.
Okay, I'm trying to find, I'm trying to find, I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of new voting equipment as presented in the amount of three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Have a second.
Second.
Further discussion on the motion. Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, no. Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you very much.
Melissa, I should have asked you, did you come to a decision about the voting place for Archdale Trinity?
We have not, but we have toured a couple of places. Um, RCC in Archdale is a very good option. That's one that we're looking at. We've invited by, been invited by the City of Trinity to come and look at their space where they have, uh, their council meetings. So we're going to look at that as well. December ninth is our next meeting when our Board December 9th is our next meeting, when our board will be hoping to make a decision about early voting, and so at this point, it looks like it might be RCC and Archdale. They've been very gracious to reach out to us. Mr. McNeil, who's on our Board of Elections, has, is on the board at RCC, and so he's done some talking, and, and they're, they've been very gracious to invite us to use it.
So the old gym is out?
Well, I think it's a possibility for the future, but it does need some upgrades, and so it's going to take a little money to get it upgraded to where our poll workers are able to use it.
Thank you very much.
It's also a good option.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, consider proposal for a law enforcement clerk for position. Steve Nutt.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So tonight, we're requesting to establish a law enforcement clerk for position. This will be utilized to assist with our payroll and personnel management within the sheriff's office. We do plan to cover the remainder of the fiscal year in our current budget, so we're not asking for any additional funds this fiscal year, but it would need to be funded the following fiscal years. Some of their responsibilities would be managing payroll processing, maintaining personnel records, provide administrative support to the sheriff and command staff as needed, assist in preparation of reports, and assist with some of the risk management stuff within the sheriff's office. It's just one of those positions that are essential to enhance the efficiency of our operations and ensure our administrative functions are managed effectively. A lot of times, these civilian positions kind of go overlooked with the, the role we play, but they're essential to, to what we do and enable us to do our job every day.
Steve, I think this, this position's a virtue of previous person being sent to the Invictus.
Yeah, we had, we had this position before, but when the Invictus project was established, this position went with Invictus to, to do their, um, record-keeping and personnel management stuff.
And I believe you have the young lady with you tonight?
We do.
All right. Questions? Do I have a motion?
Um, I'll make a motion that we approve the law enforcement clerk for position, grade 159, with salary and fringe benefits in the amount of $64,001.
Now, that's paid with lap salaries.
Yes.
This is, this is for...
That $64,000 would be for the following fiscal year, so it'd be about 32 that we'd be paying out of lap salaries.
Twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Correct.
Yes. Right. I'm motioning second. Further discussion? Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose no. Thank you, and...
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. All right, F was pulled, item G, Farmland Preservation Fund.
Mr. Chairman, as many of you know, Randolph County participates in the statewide program of present-use value being an option to be pursued for folks that have agriculture, forest land, horticultural properties. If they meet certain thresholds, they're able to apply for that to where their properties are only taxed at the value of the use that's being used, not what it might be appraised for, for future purposes. Whenever that property comes out of the program, there's a requirement that the three years previous taxes, the levy plus the interest amount are, are applied and, and need to be repaid by the property owner. And so there's been a conversation building over the years about the possibilities of using that unexpected revenue that's not budgeted each year to potentially set up a program towards preserving farmland. With all the growth that we have going on right now, there is a bit of a churn of, of property that's coming out of PUV and could potentially, other property down the line potentially could be protected in one way or another with different programs that are out there. We have spoken with the board and, and with staff about different opportunities and programs, and I don't think we're ready to commit to a particular program or, or idea of how we would utilize these funds, funds just yet. But one thing we have learned is that it takes funds to do the things that they're wanting to do. And the question has been raised, do we want to go ahead and start setting aside those PUV rollback dollars, those unexpected revenues that show up, and putting them into a kitty for future use when a program is developed? And I, I really will leave it there and, and let the commissioners discuss, ask any questions. Commissioner Allen's been a big part of this effort, and I, I want to give him the opportunity also to speak if he's got comments.
Um, thanks, sir. Really, what we're looking to do is to recycle basically, um, land that's coming out of agriculture for whatever use, whether it be economic development or for housing, whatnot, but recycle those funds back into farmland preservation. What those funds could be used for would be, um, basically protecting our agricultural lands. It'd be a local investment. There are programs out there at the state level, but most of those require some type of match. This would directly reinvest funds from lost farmland into existing or even future farms. These funds would also allow for flexible options for funding needs. Often, these funds, if you get grants from the state, often require some type of matching funds, but these funds also could be used to cover things that grants would not support, which would be something like appraisals, surveys, and other administrative costs. It'd be created an opportunity to leverage some state and federal funds that might come to, into the county, and these funds could also be spread possibly over multiple projects. So we're losing farmland at an alarming rate, just to, I think, when you look at the census from, Ag census from 2022 to 2017, we've lost 11% of our farmland in Randolph County during that period of time. So with the, you know, economic development and the pressures coming in, it's, it's, it's a real issue not only in Randolph County, but in all of North Carolina. The number of farms have gone down 10% in that period of time, and Randolph's a rural, considered rural county, so we need to start somewhere, and I think this is, um, an avenue that you basically can use, these funds that are, you know, being used for these other purposes, to invest in agricultural farmland preservation. So, um, I would like to make a motion, if it's appropriate, Mr. Chairman, that we create a farmland preservation fund using taxes collected via the present-use value rollback starting on January 1st, 2026.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Second. Lester Scott.
Did I hear that?
Second, yes, Lester.
I, on the day, I suspect that the property we bought for the Randleman High School would be in the present-use value.
Oh, I'm sure it would have been, would have been, yeah.
If we do this, that wouldn't be included.
No, it's probably, depends on, has that, is already transacted.
I don't think they've actually closed on that.
It'd be whenever they close on it.
I don't, I know there was, um...
It's closed.
It's a closed, okay. All right. All right, I have a motion. Further discussion, questions? Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, and it is approved. All right. Last item is our planning retreat. What was the two dates we...
February 19th.
February, February the 19th is the suggested date. Wanted to go ahead and do that, get it on everybody's calendar.
You need a motion?
Yeah.
Uh, I make the motion to set that planning retreat for February 19th.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion second, that the annual planning retreat be February the 19th, 26. All right. Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, and it is approved. Okay. Any action, any comments?
Do you want to let, you want to put that comment back up?
Do another 15 minutes?
I don't think there's that many people.
You want to hear anymore?
I think we've kind of let them to believe that they did a chance.
All right. All right, we're going to go back to the public comment period. Some of you, I think, have stayed, so... Who's next, Dana?
Carl Hicks.
Here he comes. Come on, Carl.
Need to be faster, don't I? That kidney transplant slowed me down just a little bit.
Good evening. My name is Carl Hicks from Randleman. I know the commissioners will soon be considering the future of our Library Board of Trustees. That decision will affect not only library policy, but also the stability of our community's governance. I urge you to approach this process with transparency and fairness. Decisions about governor, governance should not be driven by popularity or pressure, but by fairness and transparency. When institutions change course in moments of controversy, it can have ripple effects that last long after the immediate dispute. Tonight, I simply ask that you weigh not only the present concerns, but also the long-term stability of our community's governance. Please ensure that the upcoming vote is conducted with openness, respect, and a commitment to fairness and transparency. That is how stability is preserved and how confidence in our governance endures.
Hi, my name is Susan Scott, and I'm speaking again in support of the Randolph County Library Board of Trustees. Thank you for giving us time to speak. Randolph County is home to over 95,000 people. We come from different backgrounds and situations, but the library's mission is to serve all of us. Each of us deserves to find books that represent and interest us in a public library. No one should try to dictate how we feel, what we read, or which religion we should follow. The Constitution guarantees that we have those rights. Our Library Board of Trustees understands that, and they courageously made the right decision to keep a book that was challenged by a special interest group. We should be celebrating their integrity, not threatening to dismiss them. I'm asking you to keep their positions intact at next week's hearing. Also, I'm glad that you asked us to wait until the end of the meeting to speak. Otherwise, I wouldn't have heard the report from Waste Industries about the Great Oak landfill. Ashboro is one of the largest cities in Randolph County. On November 14th this year, levels of 1.4 dioxane were again detected at nearly 30 times the maximum safe level determined by the EPA. Waste Industries is one of the top two sources of this pollutant in our wastewater system. I'd like to know what Waste Industries is doing to contain that pollution. I was surprised no one here asked that question. Thank you.
Harriet Mulder.
Thank you, commissioners. I wish to speak in support of the, oh, my name's Harriet Mulder. I wish to speak in support of the Library Board of Trustees. The trustees serve to support our amazing professional librarians in their service to the public. It is the Randolph County Public Library, and "public" means it is for all, no matter your age, ethnicity, race, gender, religion, finances, or lack thereof. It is free to use for everyone, and it's an extraordinary gift. The public is all of us in all our messy, struggling humanity, and we come to the library to learn and to understand not only ourselves, but others. A library is one of the few places, perhaps the only place, where nothing is forced upon us. There are no algorithms that dominate a library. We are all able to freely choose what books we want to read or read to our children. No one is forcing literature or information, but literature and information are there so that everyone has representation and everyone can learn about others who have different experiences, come from different backgrounds, who live differently, and once you read, you no longer fear differences. Perfect love casts out fear, but people seem to promote fear much more than love. But most of all to be feared is the belief that those who do not share my faith, my race, or my ideology do not share my humanity. They are considered the them, somehow unworthy and to be feared. Our trustees must stand above this, we versus them, in all matters, just as you do. It allows a voice to all and an opportunity for all to learn. Thank you.
Thank you, Harriet.
Fritz and Amy Wang. I'll see them. Allison Ng.
Good evening, gentlemen and lady of the board. Thank you for the time. My name is Allison. I'm here to add my voice to the many that you have now heard, asking for the removal of the Library Board of Trustees. We vote and trust you guys to perform due diligence in appointing members of boards all across the county that are qualified, competent, and trustworthy. I'm not exactly sure what that process looks like. I hope it's more than whoever puts in their application first. I ask if you would consider possibly revisiting that process that you have in appointing boards' members. The Library Board, which you appointed, has shut down concerns for years. Those of us at the last quarterly meeting that they held saw how they publicly lied. There's a community of families, mothers and children, who are not able to use our public libraries, and that is a disgrace. So I humbly and respectfully ask for you to carefully consider each of your board members that you appoint, because you are responsible for them. We elect you to do that. Thank you.
Ed Leeds. Clyde Faust.
My name is Clyde Faust. I'm from Ashboro, North Carolina, and I want to talk to the parent and the grandparent in all of us. As a father of two daughters who just went off to college, so I'm an empty nester now, this, this issue with trying to remove our Board of Trustees hits, hits at home, because I want you guys to think about what the parent of a child that is transgender is going through right now. They grew up like we grew up. They grew up in this community. Nine times out of 10, they aren't transgender themselves, so they've never had to deal with the type of concerns and the type of pressures that's going through their house at that moment. And somebody, some family that's dealing with that situation came to the library, and they asked to have a book placed inside the library to help my child understand what they're going through, and to help my child's friends understand what they may be going through. Now, the first thing I want you to remember is this, whether that book is there or not, those children are still in our community. Those children are still a part of our community, and those children have done nothing illegal, and they have done nothing wrong. Think about what we're saying to those children when we say that we're going to fire the people that allowed your book to stay in our library. Think about the burden that that puts on an eight-year-old, but more importantly, think about that parent. Think about the hard decisions that we've all... Think about the hard decisions that we've all had to make as parents, but I will guarantee you that probably none of the decisions we've had to make or concerns that we've had would equal the stress that a parent is going through when he or she is told that their child is transgender. And that parent is doing everything they can to be the best parent they can for their child. And they decided that what they needed was they needed something in the library to help them out. And I hope that we're not the community that would take that away. Thank you.
Thank all of you who stayed to speak tonight and glad that you had an opportunity to be heard. Any other business to come before this board? I was going to say, we just came through the Thanksgiving season. I hope you all had a very happy Thanksgiving and that the next time we meet, it'd be New Year, Christmas and New Years, but we will meet next Monday night and all of you, probably most of you will be back for that. And Mr. Morgan has read the rules, gave you an idea of what that meeting will, how that meeting will take place. So, any further comment? Commissioners have anything tonight?
Yeah, I would like to make a comment. There's been a lot said here recently during public comment and other times that's just false, especially concerning this book. Books never been asked to be removed from the library. I keep hearing, can't get the book, can't get the book, ban book, ban book. It's never been, it's never been said. It said, everybody asked to get it moved to a more appropriate area of the library. Please understand that. Please. We keep hearing the same things and it's false, it's not true. All that was asked is for it to be in an appropriate area, not to elementary school children. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I guess, I would need to give a little update on Trillium, I guess. The government, the mid-state regional advisory board met last Tuesday and the appointment by that board was, the term for that position was up based on what the state had mandated through the secretary. It was a one-year term. So it came up that the new three-year term would be elected by that board and so I was appointed by the board to serve on the governing board for Trillium. So the mid-state region consists of Guilford, Randolph, Montgomery, Richmond, and Hanson County. So we will have a little bit more representation on the governing board for Trillium going forward.
Very good. About time.
It took a while.
We used to have a lot of representation in mental health, but last few years have not been very conducive to needs of counties like Randolph. All right, any other comments? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Have a second.
Second.
We are adjourned, thank all of you. Please be safe.